Okay, six thirty-six, we will call Finance to order them. First item, the Miller Property Agricultural Zoning. This is covered by Curtis Dev. Any other questions or comments on this? Second item, increase the selected zoning fees. Questions, comments?
I think it's good that all of our fee structure.
John emailed me the proposed changes, we can email those to him.
How do you stop on the change?
I think, now, I don't know if John mentioned it, but just looking at the view of changes.
Just go to the front.
It just doesn't have.
Doesn't have a number then.
Um, I thought even the revised amounts were very reasonable. Which Heath has that reputation among area developers of having, you know, very, very reasonable fee structure. That's plus for us, we don't want to lose that. I want to stay today. Yep.
I think that's pretty much what it all brings in. They could be that.
Yeah.
Still, I'm ready to break me down.
Third item, CRA abatement, American Wood veneer, simply under James Pumpway. Any other comments to that? It's gonna be increasing some employment out there and it's a big job, could expansion. Two thumbs up. Authorize a one-time retroactive expenditure of two hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety cents in payroll. Councillor Payable, position for longevity for the month of December twenty-four. Robert Alexander, any other comments to this? Expand on this, please, sure.
Linda Richards' retirement was planned to be twelve thirty-one. And Debbie did the paperwork to do from twelve thirty-one. And the rule says that to be eligible for longevity, you gotta work the entire month. Then along came some timing issues for PPRS that caused her to need to actually depart a couple days sooner than twelve thirty-one. When the auditors were in last week, they caught that. I'm kind of impressed that they caught that because we paid her for the entire month of December when there was one work day that she didn't work. And if it had been five hundred dollars, it'd been a fineing for recovery. But it was only two hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety cents. And the auditor advised that if we did legislation to improve that expenditure on a one-time basis, that he recognized that it was kind of splitting hairs, but he says to, he says, "I'm gonna write you up if the council doesn't do that." So, "And if you don't do it, I'm gonna have to take the money back for lending to look all at that one day." So you're not appropriating any money, just approving money that I already spent.
Money's already been spent, everything, we're just saying that it's okay.
You're just saying it's okay, Mark.
Do we hear that? That's not on anything yet, okay.
No, it's just legislative.
Questions, comments? We shake our heads, we.
I tell you what, that really impresses me that if those guys sit there and pour through, you know, stuff, this, that, match this transaction up to something somewhere else, make sure it all adds up. And, I mean, like, you'd wonder if they'd really ever do anything with all those proceeds that they do.
Just curious why she had to retire one day earlier?
I don't, I don't.
PPRS.
There was.
I mean, a lot of people that retired.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't remember the specific details, but it was end of year, then it changed. I, I don't, I don't.
They did the same thing as Dave, you had to fill in like the twenty-eighth month instead.
Wasn't that the same date of, of, the, the, the twenty-eighth?
Not until January seventh.
That's what I thought too.
Yeah, but if you went into January seventh, then you didn't start getting your check until February or something like that, so you lose a whole month. Yeah.
If that shouldn't happen one more time.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't, I, I, I know that Linda Richards had her ear to the ground real well, knew exactly what she was doing, and executed that change to benefit herself, but didn't think about the longevity aspect of Debbie Bessler that we paid her. Yeah. I don't think that she. Doctor it all back to her for missing that one day, I'll squeeze a day out of her somehow.
We still got her here on a consulting basis, right?
She's part-time, she's part-time and will become a part-time, more part-time consultant beginning in October, I think, or something.
Any comments? Okay, authorize and direct the mayor to seek goods for state-owned semi- median landscaping. Any other comments to that? It's got, it's got maintenance being here. Authorize mayor to seek goods for median landscaping maintenance. Are you okay with that? Other items? Anything others run last week?
Obviously.
Neil, Buster, two forty-two. Anything else that's right?
Oh, yeah, sure.
You don't.
You'll, you'll get a report.
Hey Mayor, when you go for the median landscaping maintenance business? Work out a deal, tell them, let them put their little sign saying, "This island maintained by this company, they do it for free."
Okay.
Or work out a deal or something like that.
Yep.
Do you run a campaign for companies doing this?
No, no, one company does them all, but they can put a little sign in at the beginning and at the end.
Something smaller than a typical campaign yard sign.
Right, smaller than that, yeah, just, just something that, you know, this, if they want to do that, if you do it for free.
Yep.
No, I'll tell you what, we only charge them a hundred dollars an island for them to have the privilege of putting the sign in and maintaining.
And maintaining.
There we go. There we go.
I'll see what I can do. See if you can.
We've got three weeds, right? We've got three, three, why don't we do it three times?
Three company? I don't want a whole bunch of different signs and I don't want one company spraying something and then someone else spraying something different. And then one's there on Tuesday and the other's on there Thursday and just cluttered up. One day they come by and just block off and do it.
Don't they have like an adopt a median area?
Yeah, yeah, one, one island looks really good and the other two die, you know.
Adopt a median.
Do we have to, uh, uh, stipulate that they hire misfits or whatever the? In the eighties.
Yeah, it's misfits in the eighties.
Okay. I think they had to wear, I think they had to wear like, going to camperski.
Yeah. No, just in case nobody understands what that is, make it with a black and white striped suit.
With a number across the.
Yep.
Well, this committee.
I got a question for him, right?
Well, I think we solved that, everything. What, one of our questions, David, was if we had, let's say the Heath Garden Club would want to take on cleaning up those medians, in other words, pulling weeds and stuff like that, would there be any liability? Let's say they were gonna do it for free, you know, just part of their thing, and so, would there be any liability or anything for them to work out in there? Like if, if one of them would accidentally step out of traffic or there be an accident and get hit? I mean, would the city have any kind of liability if they volunteered to do it?
Well, I don't think so, because I think it'd be in the sovereign community, but I, I need research to give.
I mean, you know, people clean up along the side of highways all the time, and so is this highway adopted by, you know, Heath Quonist Club or whatever, and they clean, you know, so many miles or whatever, something like that.
Adopt a median. Huh?
Yeah, adopt the median, you know, they can put, you know, even if a service club wanted to pull the weeds and stuff like that. Problem with that is if they don't pull them all the time and it looks crappy. Exactly. Or they don't know what they're doing and they pull, they pull all these big green, look at them weeds, look at them weeds.
That was a hostage.
Yeah, one man's grass weed, you know. One man's weeds and another man's flower.
They're just like the, the corner square, where you, you got, yeah, color skips does a one island and then somebody else has done an island.
Yep, right, yep.
You have to pay careful, sometimes you get what you pay for.
Yeah.
And we put a lot of money into this and want it to look nice.
You're exactly right. I, I tell you what, how many million? Four and a half, or were they five?
Five, six, seven, eight.
A lot of, a lot of money, and I don't think we ought to be cheap on this park.
I don't either.
I think that there's not that much to them.
I imagine it's gonna be a big cost.
Well, we'll see.
I'm just curious what kind of bids you're gonna come in as.
Yeah, well, that's why we're doing it. But if it's, if it's weed and water, that ain't, that ain't as far as I'm concerned.
We'll pick up this conversation after we read the bids and we get some stickers.
And all the adopted islands are promoted nationally.
This is just to seek the bids, right? This isn't to approve or anything like that? We, we gonna look at them before you approve? It just says authorize.
So to authorize to seek bids.
To seek bids.
Seek bids.
Okay. So we're gonna revisit this.
We'll revisit this conversation, I predict we're gonna say, "Oh my God, are you serious?"
I'll put my bid.
Anything else for Finance? Done at six forty-eight.
All right, we might as well do caucus real quick.
What's that?
Yeah.
Oh.
Wait a minute. I think we're gonna, if we're gonna ask Council of Ladies something, we need to pass that.
Okay.
That's. If something comes up, I'm calling, but telling not to hold his. That's, I will call, yeah. Tell him not to hold his breath.
Okay.
All right. I'll talk to you later. Brian's got a question that doesn't have to do with caucus.
Yeah, and maybe you don't want to discuss it in open form, but I'm gonna ask, I want to go back to about why, um, why the law director recommended that we withdraw ourselves from the voting board of the Davis Shea House. And I just looking for clarity on it because, you know, we talked about that, David, it's like, okay, that's fine, Stan, you get to thank God. We, we're, we're investing city money into that facility by choice of prior council, and now we have no representation, so I'm not, I'm not feeling good about that.
Well, you gotta, okay, first of all, you gotta look at it this way. They are two entirely separate entities. You've got City Heath, obviously it's a governmental entity. You've got the Heath Community Arts Council, it's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, so. First, un-understand the viewpoint that they are two entirely separate things. Now, um, the city owns the Davis Shea House. It has entered into a long-term lease agreement with the Heath Community Arts Council for the Heath Community Arts Council to operate it as a cultural arts facility. In the lease, there are certain things that the Arts Council is responsible for doing, and there's certain things that the city's responsible for. For instance, the city's responsible for paying for insurance on it, making sure that the lights stay on, that, you know, the, the building is maintained, all that kind of stuff. Those are things that the city's responsible for. Um, and that, you know, now, no money necessarily changes hands as a result of that lease, because the lease doesn't say anything about bed tax money, and the lease doesn't require the Arts Council to pay us rent or whatever for operating it. Uh, so, so no money necessarily changes hands as a result of that, that lease agreement, okay? Now, the city also, much more recently, has entered into a separate agreement with the Arts Council, and that's that management contract. When Jan retired, remember, Jan was a city employee, so Jan was performing any number of functions for the city um, related to the operation of Shea House and the Arts Council. You know, Jan would come here about once a quarter and then report to, you know, and all that, okay? And she did, obviously, lots of other things too. So the management contract between the city and the Arts Council, again, spells out, uh, what the city's responsible for as part of that agreement and what the Arts Council's responsible for. The city is responsible for paying the Arts Council the thirty thousand, then the twenty-seven thousand, then the twenty-four thousand, you know, each year, going down, for services of the executive director, which include many of those things that Jan was doing for the city when she was a city employee. So, you've got these agreements, you've got the lease agreement, and now you've got the management contract, okay? The conflict of interest became particularly clear to me with the management contract, okay? Is the city's paying the Arts Council for services. Myself, and Bob, and council members, and Dick Morrow was on the, the Arts Council Board as well. We are going to be responsible for making sure that we are receiving from the Arts Council the services that we have, you know, that are stipulated in that management contract. Now, it's a, to me, it was a clear conflict of interest. How, how can I be responsible for making sure that the city is receiving those services while at the same time I'm a voting member of the board of the entity that's supposed to be providing those services? To me, as an individual, it seemed like a pretty clear conflict of interest, and, and that was what was spelled out in the, uh, opinion, I guess, of, uh.
What, from the, from the law director?
Correct, that I, that, that I should step down as a voting member of the board. Now, that's not to say that I can't attend Arts Council Board meetings. That's not to say that I can't provide feedback to the Arts Council Board. Um, but I shouldn't be a voting, you know, uh, member of that board while the, that entity is providing the city services that the city's paying for.
Well, and, and that might be the way the contractors draw them up then, and that we're paying just for those services, but it's still city tax dollars that are, that are being directly to the facility, and we have no vote. We have no vote in the out-of-advantage, uh, how the money's spent, it's the citizens' tax dollars that are going there, so we, we've totally lost any control that we have with the facility.
We have some oversight.
Yes and no.
Oversight.
We have some oversight, you just don't have a vote.
But there's no.
Again, what you just said is the conflict of interest. Pay, funding an entity that you then help direct and control, that is the conflict of interest, what, what you just outlined.
Because you're saying we're only funding her income, that's the only thing we're funding.
It wouldn't matter what we were funding.
If tax dollars are going, then we have no represent picture, we're not.
Probably looking up, you might be a star in a company, you know, and all the new.
It's paying to tell you it's going.
Well, it's the citizens' money, that's, and there's not a, the city, the city is.
The city owns the.
Contractually entered into an agreement long ago, giving this beggone house for a dollar a year or something, I forget what it is.
I don't know.
So, then the taxman, sure, the, the, the people can't suffer. I, I agree with you. It is a conflict of interest.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, and that was the viewpoint of some past city officials who are on that board. What, but, what I'm saying is, is that what you just stated, that is the conflict. That is the ethical conflict of interest that I wanted to step away from.
So Law Director, you believe it's a conflict of interest that we're on the voting board?
Yeah, if we were voting, if, if a city official was a voting member of the board. Well, what I thought would be nice would be if they could revise their, uh, articles for corporation or their code regulations so that city officials could be what's called an ex officia members of the board, not voting, but be a member, a non-voting member by virtue of holding the office of, of mayor or city council or something like that. But the conflict is that the mayor would be there representing the city, but also he has an obligation to the, to the organization to get the best deal it can from the city. So you're kind of negotiating with yourself. And that's, see if he's a voting, a member of the board, then he has an obligation to, to the Arts Council in, to get the best deal it can from the city, at the same time the city's trying to get the best deal it can from the Arts Council.
The city's trying to get out of it. I mean, that's why we drew up that descending investment into the facility, I think, at that, that amount that we're paying now, so.
Right. But the contract does call for, uh, the Arts Council to report to the city how it's spending the money and make sure, so that the city can determine whether it's performing its obligations under the contract.
And I've asked Jill to come to Bob's committee, who's been doing a couple weeks, to provide a, a report, like, like what Jan would do.
So is Bob Sturton continuing to use some of his budget, money out of his budget to do things at the Shea House like there is today?
As it relates to paying the electric bill, yes.
No, extra things.
Oh, no. I, I told them and told you guys, when we put together the two thousand thirteen budget, we are not co-sponsoring any events there. We are not buying, we're, we're not paying for advertising, um, we are not paying for an ad that they had in the Yellow Pages. We are not paying for any outdoor tents. We are, we are, we are going to meet our obligations as it relates to the lease and the management contract. That's what we're obligated to do.
Well, just seems that we have no oversight, we, we lost oversight, we lost some control.
Having the oversight is the conflict. That is the conflict of interest. It would be like.
Look, you don't have to explain that.
No, no, I'm, I'm trying to put it in a context that, that, that would make it clear for you. It would be like.
No, I understand what you're saying, we're paying her to do the job for us and then we're gonna go help her do it, I understand.
I'm advising the city on funding and then as a member of that board directing how that funding is used? You can't do that.
The mayor wasn't there in his capacity as mayor, he was there as an individual, just like anybody else could be a, a member of the board. So he wasn't, he wasn't officially representing the city while he was on the board. But that's, that's the problem, which, which side is he on if there's a, if the board and the city bumped heads?
Yeah.
But when, when we had voting members on the board, we also voted on, um, more than just what money was spent on.
Correct.
We vote on, where they would vote on which way they want to go with certain events and certain, certain, maybe monthly events that they put on, um, and, and that would allow us to control, and I might as well just cut to the chase. Uh, you know, I talked to Chris, and, uh, you know, Chris is telling me that, uh, you know, in a way, there's things that they will do that, that could compete with local business, and if, if we have nowhere, if we're not, we have no voting members of the city to protect the city's interests, even the other businesses within the ci, within the city, then we've totally lost that control. No, and just Chris I talked to, I thought I should talk to him. I know, he, he was concerned about it too, so I'm just trying to get a better version of it.
Well, what, what does this council have the authority over?
Well, if you're a voting member.
What, what does this city council have the authority over as it relates to this, to, to the Shea House project?
I'm talking about the board members, the voting board members, they're part of this council, there's like two council persons and yourself, like.
Especially for the bed tax.
Yeah, I'm asking, I'm asking you, what does this council have authority over as it relates to the Shea House project?
Ninety thousand dollars a year.
The bed tax ordinance. If this body feels as though the Arts Council is, well, first of all, if this body feels as though the Arts Council is either breaching the lease or the management contract, that would maybe be handled separately. But this council has the authority to modify the bed tax ordinance should it feel as though the project is not going in a way that it seizes the best interests of the city?
Since, since we started talking about this.
It would be, it would be like, again, I'm trying to think of another analogy that, that would make sense. It would be as though, as a city official, I'm authorizing money being spent in a contract with ABC Services Company that does some service, and then I am one of the people that gets decide how that service operates and how, and how its money is used. Now, there is cer, in my mind, it's crystal clear, there is an opportunity for one to abuse that situation, should they choose to do so. Nobody ever had in the past, and I certainly didn't either, but the opportunity's there, it's, and, and, and that's conflict. That, that's a conflict, that's a conflict of interest, you can't have that. Being a part of two entities like that in that capacity.
I think you abstain from votes that related to things like that, I know, we give up, we, we have dollars, we have people that have a side of it.
We vote on a ton of stuff that involves, the, the, the Arts Council would vote on, the Arts Council Board would vote on a ton of stuff that would involve the spending of money, uh, so abstain from that, yeah.
Okay, I do have one other thing, just because we started talking about this, in our, in my meeting last time, we talked about that you were resigning because of conflict of interest, but then I got the advocate the next day and it said something completely different, and I was kind of blind side of that, I was like, what, where did that come from?
Yeah.
And what, how did the advocate get that information?
When, your call, that what I said was, when Jan, when, when the management contract was put into place, that's what made it very clear to me, okay? The money that the city was paying the Arts Council for those services, it made it very clear to me that, that there was a conflict of interest. I knew Jan was gonna be retiring. I'm not sure if Jan had anna, I think Jan had announced her retirement prior to the city entering into that management contract. So I knew there was going to be, uh, a period of considerable transition. And to try to maintain as much continuity as could be maintained during the process of Jan leaving and somebody new coming on, I thought it would be best for the Arts Council to stay in that capacity through the completion of that transition, all right? Um, in March, whenever that was, an article came out, there was a vote by the Arts Council Board of whether or not Jill was going to continue as the executive director. The vote was taken, and the majority of the board members voted that she would continue. To me, at that second, the transition was complete. She had had a six-month probationary period, the board that she works for evaluated that they wanted to continue with her, and so that was the decision that was made, transition complete. Soon as the vote ended, I handed in. Soon as the vote ended, I handed in my resignation and walked out. So that was the, I mean, what you saw in the article with the vote and all that. Had the vote gone the other way, I still had my resignation, you know, in hand. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just was, I was surprised by that, because we talked about it, and they made it sound like that was the only reason that you all resigned.
Yeah, that kind of, that was unfortunate. I, 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 I think Kent did say that the reason why I resigned was the opinion of, uh, the law director, uh, for conflict of interest. However, putting that five-sentence paragraph, or, or, or five-line paragraph in the context of the article, you lose that, and, and it gets kind of swallowed into the rest of the context. Can I?
Yeah.
Actually, I got two questions. Did you say we have a maintenance agreement in the lease?
A management contract.
But, but in the lease itself, is part lien maintenance?
Yep.
And that's kind of what, somewhat tricky, is, and the parts were burdened?
Yes, yes.
Did you see where they're hiring a part of, Brown's?
Yep. If, if the Arts Council chooses to hire someone to provide a greater level of service than what the city deems as appropriate according to the lease, fine. That's up to them.
Haven't they had Dan last week anyway? Is it just his position that he filled in?
That position has been refilled for a while.
I, I thought that was voluntary. I thought he, I thought he volunteered.
Dan was an Arts Council employee. Perhaps paid through, perhaps paid through the temp agency? Um, I, I, I can't call. Now, uh, did Dan put in more time than what he was paid for? Uh, yeah. Did he volunteer a lot of time, Nick? Yeah.
And then the other question is.
Yeah.
Is, is, the city still paying Jan for any services?
Um, not as it relates to the Shea House or the Arts Council. Um, Jan did, uh, Jan does have, um, as part of Bob's independent contract line item in his budget, um, Jan, uh, has received compensation for us. For instance, she was the one, I, I think as you all know, was the one that really ran with the whole Blackboard Connect uh, concept, and did, I don't know, ninety, ninety-five percent of the homework on that, so.
There was more money spent, more money invested in that than eight thousand seven hundred and something, what other companies?
Um, out of Bob's previously appropriated money for independent contracts, she did receive money to, to do that, and she'll probably do other things for us too. She is a tremendously hard worker, uh, extremely intelligent, and, uh, more thorough than anyone could ever hope for.
I haven't a doubt of that.
Um, when you have somebody that brings her considerable talents to the table, you'd be a fool to not try and utilize it.
You got the money.
I just, I was, I was gonna beat the dead horse one more time. But, uh, uh, even though I would like to have, you know, total control over the Davis Shea House, because you know what I'd be willing to do. Having, not having the council people and the mayor on the board, I think could be, in a few years or as time goes on, a greater than when they were on it, because if you sit in a board over there, and they say, hey, we need money for this, this, and this, and you're four in that group, it's really hard to say, then say yes, yes, yes there, and then come here and say no, no, no. You know what I'm saying? So that's where I think the conflict comes in, it's, you know, if you're sitting over at the Davis Shea House.
You're not feeling obligated to do it.
And they're saying, they're saying, we, you know, we want this kind of money or whatever, and say, yeah, we'll go back to council and get it. And if you already got two or three yeses coming in, they only have to get one or two more, and it's a done deal, okay? You know, for years, before you were on here and everything, I was fighting against trying to find a person or two that would say no, no, no to them, so we could cut that, the money to the, the hotel, hotel taxes and stuff. I mean, I was, I was always a no, no, no. I lobbied heavily for that and stuff. But, you know, most of the time I looked across the table, and it was like, well, they're on the board, on the board, on the board, on the board, you know, and stuff. So I didn't, the deck was stacked against me from the beginning. So now, since the mayor's off, and other council people are off, so they may not feel as inclined to just say yes, yes, yes to everything they want. They may be more inclined to say, well, let me think about it, maybe you really need that, you know, and stuff. So in the future, it may help us, you know, not, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Today, it looks like, oh, we lost total control, but, but in a few years, it may look like we actually have more control. Because we'll be thinking independently of their, what their needs are, we'll be thinking of the city's needs, and, you know, going forward then. That's what you said.
Well, I, I, I think, at least in the three-plus years that I have been on the board, myself and Bob, there was only ever one council member. Cleus was on, and then when Cleus stepped down from the board, Dick Morrow took the position on the board. Um, well, we were, we of nine people on the board. I mean, we had no control.
Yeah.
Uh, of what was going on, um, and, you know, right up to the point that I resigned. We had no control of what was going on, because the article was accurate in saying that Bob and I both voted, uh, no, um, and, on, on, on Jill, uh, remaining as the executive director. So that shows you what kind of control we had. Um, but, you know, like I said, the, the issue is that, um, even though I, and, and Dave tried, even though I served on the board as an individual, I wasn't, you know, I wasn't, you know, mayor Mark John serving on the board. I am always the mayor, I'm, I'm always the mayor. And so I, it, it, you can't have, like I said, especially when that management contract came into place, that was, that was when I saw the writing on the wall clearly. I, I, I couldn't continue to be, however, I felt it would be extremely detrimental to the Arts Council as it was trying to transition from Jan to a new executive director for then the appearance of, oh gee, now the city's backing out of the, you know, I mean, that, to me, that would have added a whole nother level of, of, um, turmoil to the whole, for lack of a better term, to the whole situation. And so when the decision was made, uh, that the transition was complete, it's time for you to step down.
And where are you, caucus? You done, caucus? Uh, vacation, pledge of allegiance, it's going to be Mr. Henry. Roll call, we need to excuse Mr. Henry. Huh?
We'll do that.
Okay. Um, approval minutes, and then elections, special orders are unfinished, we have none. Uh, petition communications, uh, dilimpy utility accounts, um, that's public services, right? Yeah, so, uh, Jeff, you want to do that? We got visitors, committee reports, uh, Jeff, are you gonna do public services, or do we just not have any since he's not here and just say, we'll be giving it to Nick?
Lynn has a report for me somewhere.
I mean, we can either report, or I can just say, or give it to Nick.
Dick was working on it after everybody left.
Oh, was she? So she might have it?
She's got a report also to read it.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't seen the report.
Can't you, can't you just say, you know, file the, or, or, or file the report as submitted? I mean, can't you just directly do that? Make that part of, make that just part of the record?
Yeah, we do, and then if Dick wants to expound on it in, in two weeks if he's back, he can do that too.
I mean, I don't know that he necessarily, I don't know that anybody necessarily is good for the exercise of reading it, it could just be recorded.
Okay. All right. Um, then everyone else is here on their committees. Uh, introduction ordinances, that first one, uh, we need to suspend the rolls and vote on that one, Mr. Henry, review that one. And then, uh, ordinances on second reading, uh, let's see, we got Beat the Heat, so that would be you and Mr. Johnson. And then the next is, uh, for the PD, so that'd be you also, Brian. And the third one is PD, so that's you also, John. And the fourth one is parks, so that's my, this is cool. Twenty-four is, uh, the DARE program, so that's back to you, Brian. And twenty-six is, uh, that's you also. Does anyone have a problem or any questions about any of those? Okay, and then nothing else, and we're done, so, should go pretty quick. Any questions, comments?
From the public service, you're just gonna make a statement, you don't want to make a statement?
I'll say public service.
Let's, let's make sure Lynn's got it.
If she's, Lynn's got it, I say, if not, I just say, and we'll, we'll do public services next, next, next meeting. I mean, I've done it before, I mean, you know. But if, if you have something and you want to read it, or you want to do something, I can call one you. I mean, I'm not looking for something to say.
I got two other things on here already, okay?
If you really, really want to read it, I'll let you read it, I mean, I have no problem with that.
I have planning permission, I ain't, I got plenty to talk about, more, I'm not looking.
You're doing the indication.
I'd like to get a quick meeting, so I'll like.
Yeah, but move bar set by, move bar set by the.
Right.